Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started in our February 11th meeting, our 6:30 PM session. And we will go ahead and get started with the roll call vote.
Billisid?
Present.
Kaufman Gomez?
Present.
Dodge?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Hurst?
Montesino?
Here.
Cervantes?
Here.
And I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Verenice Valentin, who will be leading us in our Pledge of Allegiance tonight. She's our new mayor on the Watsonville Youth City Council, and also a resident there of District 2. And that is the same district she represents on the Youth Council, so thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry, I now ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much, Verenice.
Thank you.
Before going on to oral communications, I did just wanna make an announcement for anyone in the chamber needing translation equipment. So now we're at oral communications. This is a time set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item that is not on the council agenda. You can please come forward to the podium, just state your name for the record, and we look forward to hearing from you.
I haven't been here for quite a while, and I actually preferred that, to stay away from here. But when I start seeing good, dedicated people in this town getting accused and insulted of things that are simply not true, I had enough. The last meeting, we heard a lot of stupidity from some of you, and from some of your usual rent-a-crowd idiots. Councilwoman Hurst had his diarrhea of the mouth with his comments, but since he isn't here, I'll wait till the next meeting, when he comes back, to directly address his bogus accusations. The shocker was Lupi Rivas, an elected official with a lot of education behind her name, is on the school board, came in here and suggested that only rich people vote. What kind of campaign slogan is that? Vote for me if you're rich because you're the only voter out there? What insanity and stupidity! Now, some of you complained about the youth not being able to vote for this public naming process. This is a very dishonest line, and I imagine that's what's gonna be used in the campaign. The naming petition includes the entire town in the process. Non-voters have the right to go to you, to ask you to put a name on the ballot, and in addition, they have the right to campaign across the entire town, even if they can't vote on the issue. This council wants to raise the sales tax, probably gonna be in June. Yet many of you refuse to spend much of your campaign contributions in this town. Why do you go out of town to spend your campaign contributions? Why don't you support local businesses and employees? We've, many of us have looked at Dan Dodge's Form 460 for Measure T. You spent hundreds of dollars at Costco? You mean you drive to Santa Cruz to buy food and supplies at Costco in Santa Cruz, and you can't spend that money here? And you wanna raise the sales tax? Unbelievable! You spent, you raised lots of campaign contributions out of town. You raised about sixteen thousand bucks from Donald Orozco, an out-of-town developer, which is very suspicious why he'd pump in that kind of money. I mean, I wonder if that really was his money. I believe it would be prudent for you, Mr. Dodge, to look at your own 460s, 'cause I have reviewed them, and other of us have reviewed them, since you're into filing complaints. And bringing up technical issues or boxes not being checked on a Form 460. You really should go check your own paperwork on your Form 460s, because there are numerous inconsistencies and questionable items there. And you still go take your time to amend them. There hasn't been a complaint filed that I'm aware of yet, but you ought to think about amending them, 'cause there are issues there. When someone questions this council, generally, some of you and your sicko friends come along and start calling them racist, Republicans, old guard, senior citizens that have been tricked. Do you honestly think that that's gonna get you support? Do you honestly think that? You can go ahead and keep embarrassing yourself if that's what you wanna do, but you're gonna hurt your entire cause here. You're gonna hurt the entire town. If that's the campaign you wanna run, go ahead, see if you can get Mr. Orozco or Mr. Al to donate money toward your dishonest campaign.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am Maria Elena de la Garza, and I am the new Executive Director of the Community Action Board. And so I'm here to formally introduce myself, and to thank the Watsonville City Council for your many, many, many years of support to our agency and our services. CAB is the anti-poverty agency that exists in Santa Cruz County, and we have programs that have existed for many years that offer services to our community's most vulnerable. I'd like to say that I am a product of CAB. When I was eight years old, and my mother was a widow, she didn't speak English, and she didn't know how to drive. And back then, those of you who are locals will remember that there was La Collección on Rodriguez Street, which was a CAB program. And my mom got to go to driver's education and take classes in Spanish. And because of CAB, she was able to move forward with our family business and to take us to school every day. Also, when I was about sixteen, CAB was my first job. And so I used to babysit the children at the head start, the migrant head start at the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds. And so at Campesinos, the field workers would go and drop off their children, and we would babysit them until they got picked up. And so CAB's been around for a long time, and has been offered such, offering such important and critical services to our community. This year, as we start off the new year, we celebrate fifty years on the War on Poverty. We celebrate one year of the Day Worker Center, where about twenty-five percent of our clients are from Watsonville. We celebrate how many folks walked through our doors to the Immigration Project. Of the nine thousand people we served last year, six thousand of them were for the Immigration Project. That's huge. The services are critical. And as we embark in this grant season, I ask you to think about how those faces of poverty have changed or have stayed the same, and to continue your partnership with us. This won't be the first or the last time you see me here, I can bet, but I wanna thank you for your support. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Ellis, and I'm formally introducing myself as a low-income rep, previously on the board of CAB. I just wanna thank you for your contributions that you've done with CAB, Community Action Board. I have used the services myself when I was homeless. I am representing also the recovery community, and also, as a single mom, I know that the CAB contributions are critical for our community. And I will do my best to help contribute to CAB as a board member, and represent our community for the low income. And since this year marks the fiftieth year anniversary of poverty, I wanna continue to collaborate with the city council and our members. And just wanna say thank you for everything that you guys have done, and we will continue to connect with each other, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, my name is, excuse me, my name is Dan Hernandez, lifelong residents of the valley. And for those of you who don't understand what that means, I'll let you know. I was born on Gonder Street in Pawaro. My papers say I was in Salinas County General, but no, I was born there and transported over. I was one of the first being born off the reservation free. So if you don't know what that understands, Daniel, maybe I'll put it in words you do. So, all I'm saying, man, is, you know, you talk to talk, but you better walk to walk. That's what it means, where I've been here for a lifetime. I've seen people like you come and go. And if you're wondering what's that taste you're feeling in the back of your mouth, that's what the taxpayers have been tasting for quite some time with this council. It's time for a change. You have that opportunity, but it's in your hands, so be it.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address this council on items not on the agenda? So now, when approaching the microphone, I will go ahead and return it to council for oral communications. Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor. I just wanted to report on a couple of things really quick. First of all, I had the pleasure and the privilege of attending a reception at the consulate general's residence in San Francisco for Mosh Hashimoto, local community hero. He received a commendation from the government of Japan for his friendship-building efforts between the United States and Japan. Mosh, as you recall, was our grand marshal of our parade in 2011, and I was very honored to be invited, and really wanna recognize Mosh and his wife, Masha, as part of our community heroes here in the city of Watsonville. Also, I wanted, this agenda item earlier was a consent agenda, the Transit Center, I represent the city on the Santa Cruz Metro. The Transit City, the Transit Center, located on Rodriguez Street, is, and they're going through some renovation, some of the kiosks were removed. And we'll be calling out in the near future to be able to invite people to be able to attend public hearings on what they'd like to see. We want to be able to update the facility, to be able to do some ADA accessible options, and even possibly, we've had meetings with the Santa Cruz Metro staff and the city staff to be able to create a police substation there. And I wanted to report on that. I usually don't address angry members of the Tea Party when they come and address this council, since I believe in, everybody has a right to, their three minutes to say what they wanna say. The reason that you're able to see, Measure T was a campaign that was held a year ago, the reason you're able to see the money that was raised and spent is 'cause we filed the appropriate forms. The FFP required forms. Unlike some of the recent petition drives where the unknown donors and the people that are funding that campaign, and a complete absence of some appropriate documents, were never filed. I think that that speaks for itself. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Montesino, did you wanna?
Yeah, just wanted to report out, we just had, last week, the Youth Council had their other meeting, and where they elected Verenice as the current mayor now. And, but one of the highlights, I think, of the moments in that meeting was with a concerned parent stood up and said, but she was fearful to take her kids over to the public schools. And I was gonna get up and say something, and I didn't have to, 'cause the Youth Council, every, almost every single one of them responded so professionally, even though a lot of them haven't attended, the public, 'cause they attend SEBA or other charter schools. But all of them had been in the public, in public schools. So they, the way they responded to that parent is, the comfort is, is like, there's nothing to be feared, there's opportunities there, there's, we went through, we went through those schools and look at where we are now. So I just, I really wanted to point that out to the council and to the community. Those kids are gonna do great, awesome things in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Billisid?
I just wanna make a, just a quick correction, that those schools, charter schools, they are public schools. And so they're all public schools, but just that those parents are in a different mode, and the school is run by a charter, but it is public. So, okay. Now, my comments. Trina and I went to Hartnell College, and I have to say, there was a very detailed program on ag. And they have a new facility that is just phenomenal. They have tractor repair there, they have welding, it's a very large facility. And it's a new facility, but it really complements, I think, the Cabrillo College Solari Center. So with both colleges having good things happening, it's great for our youth. And speaking of that, tomorrow, Watsonville High School is having an ag career day at 1:45. So a lot is happening in the agricultural field, in the Watsonville community, in the Pawaro Valley, and in the college system. And I wanna commend people in college right now that are looking to the future. The other thing is, Daniel talked about representing the Transit District, well, I represent the Levy. And there was a new DVD that was put out by Romney Dunbar, and it shows the bench excavation, the removal, all of the dirt. It's really good, and I would hope that maybe we could have it at a future meeting. That concludes my remarks, thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez?
Yes, certainly, I've got a few events, too, that will be coming up here shortly. Heritage Foundation, they do have a crab feed, and this is funds to be raised to help with the improvement that's out at the fairgrounds. The Freedom Rotary will have their thirtieth annual Casino Night, which will be held the fifteenth of March, and tickets are now on sale. We normally have about four hundred and fifty people attend, well-received, and the funds that are raised go back out into the community. So I believe we've had some recipients in our area here that have been able to benefit from that. We also have, I will be taking classes with Ag Culture, and that'll be a nine-month process for me to make a commitment to learn and be educated better with regarding our agricultural resources in our community here. So I hope to have a big learning curve to get that experience. And I'm working to also coordinate with the city staff with regards to the fires that have been out at Ramsey Park. Also bringing the resources with the Fire of the Police, Public Works, as well as maybe some of the mental health facilities that could help us with that situation. And to see what options we can come up with to help with some, alleviate some of that pressure that's going on as a result of the homelessness that don't necessarily make it over to the shelters. I also have, there's a little library that is now on Stanford Street. For anybody in District 6 that has an interest in sharing and swapping some library books, so I encourage you to take a look at that, and bring some in, and maybe share some as well. So that is something going on in our neighborhood that's there. And we're on poverty, again, Community Action Board, I'm on the, I'm on the board with the Community Action Board. We've had a nice retreat where I was able to meet Rachel, and they are doing quite a bit with our community, especially that resource that really needs a lot of support in our area here. So I commend the agency with what they're doing, and really looking at that fiftieth anniversary on the War on Poverty that was brought up with Kennedy. And we are wanting to go ahead and keep, keep the momentum going, and revive a little bit of that on the anniversary. And that's, enough said for me, thank you.
Thanks very much. Mayor Protem Hernandez?
I just have a few things. I had the opportunity to attend the Pause for Talent, the local Watsonville High School talent show, and be a judge. And, you know, I was really impressed with all the students there, but, you know, it got me thinking about the Mellow Center, and, you know, it's a, it's a great venue that we gotta start, as a community, utilizing more. The other thing I attended is the Watsonville Forward Networking Meeting that happened over at the Kitchen Incubator. And I got to meet some of the local business startups that have opened up recently, and I was really impressed with them, with our local entrepreneurs here that we have in Watsonville. We actually got to try some of their stuff, some of their goods that they had, and it was a really great, really great meeting that we had there. And I'm, again, I'm really impressed with all our local entrepreneurs that we have. We have to support them as much as we can, so visit the Kitchen Incubator. The other thing I attended is the Ivy League Project Conference they had at the Watsonville High School. And it was attended by students from all over California, from San Jose, Central Valley, Salinas, from all over. And I spoke to some of the students there at one of their workshops, and I have to say, I spoke to a lot of Aptos and Watsonville High School students. And I was really impressed with the amount of students that we have that are, you know, just, it's really impressive that we have that many amount of students that are going to Ivy League schools and universities. You know, they're asking me for advice about, you know, doing the admissions interview and everything like that, and it's been so long for me, though. But it was just really impressive. We should have stories on those students that, you know, that get accepted into these universities despite whichever background they come from. Those are stories that we should be putting about our youth, that, you know, work hard every day, you know, doing extracurricular stuff, and still maintaining the grade point average, and going to Ivy League schools. And I also encourage people to support them in their Ivy League project, which they get to visit different schools, universities throughout the country. And one of their goals is to raise three thousand in order to go to the East Coast Ivy League schools. So I really encourage people to support them. And that's about it. Madam Mayor?
Thanks very much. So just for myself, I just wanted to throw out a save the date for the Watsonville Film Festival. It's coming March fourteenth through the sixteenth, to be held at the Mellow Center. Friday is completely dedicated to student films and some of the productions that are part of the local youth talent that we have and are highlighting. Various council members have mentioned the talent of our young people in this community. As well as, congratulations to Verenice Valentin again for her promotion to mayor of the Watsonville Youth City Council. And as well as a huge welcome to your new post, Maria Elena de la Garza, I was also a Community Action Board staff member there, working when it was Youth Community Restoration Project, then transitioned to Community Restoration Project. So that definitely influenced a lot of my commitment to the various issues we face as a city, as well as my commitment to the young people of this community. And I did just wanna touch on, because, you know, when I see sort of my, my comments misrepresented, and also taken out of context, I do just wanna sort of note that what I meant by students not being able to participate in the process, I was just stating what the proposal to name the public place is, what it's shifting our current process from. The current process doesn't require anybody to have to lobby city council members to put a name forward, including, you know, the opportunity for young people, they could go to the Parks and Recreation Commission if they want to, and propose a naming of a public place. The proposal is going to change that, to where only council members can propose a name. And so it does interfere and interrupt the engagement of young people to participate in that part of the public naming process. So I'll just make that correction, and can say more if need be. But moving on now, we'll have a report from our attorney on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed one item in closed session, and council received the report but took no action this evening.
Thank you for that. Also, item 3.3, we're gonna have a presentation from United Way regarding the 2-1-1 program.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Jackie Ventura with the Community Development Department will make a presentation regarding the 2-1-1 program and the city's participation. And I promise, the news are a lot better than the earlier presentations.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Cervantes, and members of the city council staff, members of the community. I also have the pleasure of serving as a city manager's designee, representing the city of Watsonville on the 2-1-1 Steering Committee. I'm here on February 11th, or 2-1-1, to bring awareness and to update you on the progress of the 2-1-1 program. I am joined by another Steering Committee representative, Ms. Leanne Juan. She is the Administrative Manager at Monarch Services, formerly Women's Crisis Support, Defensa de Mujeres. As part of a coordinated effort, other members of the Steering Committee are doing similar presentations before the Board of Supervisors, the cities of Capitola and Santa Cruz, and other community organizations. As you are aware, this has been a record flu season, and I apologize that our planned presentation by our expert volunteer 2-1-1 coordinator has caught the bug, so to speak. So we will only take up a very brief amount of your time this evening. We hope that everyone here knows what the 2-1-1 program is, but for those of you who may not be familiar, 2-1-1 is a centralized clearinghouse for the public to get information on health and human services. Access is easy. Callers can use the easy-to-remember, toll-free number, 2-1-1, where a trained specialist will match needs to local services. It's fast, free. It's fast, free, confidential, and available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in more than 170 languages, including Spanish. 2-1-1 provides information and referrals to childcare, local food pantries, housing resources, substance abuse programs, after-school programs, tutoring, mental health counseling, volunteer opportunities, tax assistance programs, and much more. In times of disaster, 2-1-1 provides up-to-date information on road closures, evacuation sites, and temporary shelter, relieving the burden on 911. Sponsors include the Cities of Capitola, Santa Cruz, and Watsonville, along with the United Way of Santa Cruz County, the County of Santa Cruz, Dominican Hospital, Sutter Health, First Five of Santa Cruz County, the Santa Cruz Fire Chiefs Association, American Medical Response, Applied Survey Research, the Community Foundation of Santa Cruz County, and the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Cruz, the Paharo Valley Community Health Trust, PG&E, Plantronics, Santa Cruz County Office of Education, and Santa Cruz Regional 911. And we think it's very important that we acknowledge and thank them for their support, as well as the City of Watsonville. We have provided you with a copy of the three-year report to the community, and we've also brought along some extra copies in case anyone would like to take one. We'll leave them out at the front of the council chambers.
So the United Way, oh, I'm sorry. launched 2-1-1 in Santa Cruz County in July of 2010, and has since served nearly 15,000 residents. This successful 24/7 Health and Human Services referral service program has been made possible by the generous support of many local government and nonprofit agencies, including the City of Watsonville. Thank you for your continued support and for helping to connect thousands of residents in need to the services. Since 2010, 2-1-1 has also provided nearly 20,000 referrals for individual needs, 28% of which were for housing and utility assistance, 13% for income support, and 11% for food and meal. Our goals for the future of 2-1-1 include increasing the spending power of residents through programs such as CalFresh and Earn Income Tax Credit, informing all callers of healthcare opportunities through Covered California, administering the iFoster referral service for foster parents, and increasing publicity to service areas and populations less represented, such as veterans, Scotts Valley residents, and Spanish-speaking residents. As always, we greatly appreciate your partnership in spreading the word about 2-1-1 to the agencies and anyone you work with. I have materials with us today, and you can call United Way anytime to pick up bookmarks, rack cards, business-sized cards, and posters. We are one of the only countywide 2-1-1 service providers without full-time dedicated staff in the county to support this expansive program, and we certainly could not do this vital work without your support and partnership. Thank you for all you have done and continue to do to ensure that Santa Cruz County residents in need are receiving services to improve their quality of life for themselves, their families, and our entire community. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. Just a reminder that 2-1-1 is out there for everybody to use, and there's almost no question they can't help you with.
And could you just repeat, I know we just have this listed as a presentation, but just repeat a number where they can call for additional questions or to get more information about the program? Yeah, 2-1-1, yeah.
And also, the United Way also can answer any program questions that you might have.
2-1-1 can refer you to the United Way.
Oh, perfect. Okay, sounds good. Okay, and thank you for your presentation.
I had some questions for them before they go, maybe? No questions?
We can make comments.
You can make comments, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I wanted to thank you for your presentation, and I think 2-1-1 is relatively new, and there's been a lot of people, a lot of agencies that's gotten together. I think it's really great. So thank you for all of your hard work, and if you have extra of these, I'd like a stack, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez? I mean, the agenda's written out.
I understand. It was a question, and I will just have to wait.
And now we have a presentation from Public Works and Utilities on our department video.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. We have a short video for you tonight, and I wanted to preface it by letting you know, we do a lot of different things in Public Works and Utilities, and a lot of things we do are sort of under the radar. They're underground. Our pipes are underground. A lot of our infrastructure is out of the sight of the community. And so we are making a concerted effort and a priority to communicate more with the community about the work we do in our department, just so we can engage the community at a better, higher level, and to share with the community all the different programs and projects that are offered and are done by our Public Works and Utilities Department. And so we've been doing a lot more posting to the website, to our Facebook page, to various social media, working with The Patch, and reaching out more actively to our local newspapers. And so one other effort we're doing is short, informative, and interesting, hopefully, videos that talk about different segments of our departments. So we have engineering and transportation, water, drinking water, sewage treatment, water recycling, solid waste and recycling, and then an airport. And so each division has worked on a short video to say something about their department. So we have one tonight to share with you about our engineering and transportation department. So we'll just show the short video, and Maria has some other things to say. Thank you. in particular love YouTube and love videos, and so we're going to be bringing to you over the next few months, different videos from different divisions, and sharing those with you. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Director, Maria Esther Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Another aspect of our engineering division is indeed that, our engineers. I wanted to let you know and remind you, if you didn't already, get your Hallmark cards ready. Next week is indeed Engineers Week. And as part of that, we are conducting our annual Egg Drop Competition. It will be held on Thursday, February 20th, right here outside of our administrative offices here in the alleyway. It's a great event. We introduce engineering to our youth in the community. Last year, I believe, we had about 70 containers dropped from the top floor of the building, and the youth really loved to see if their eggs survive, and we take the opportunity to talk about engineering a bit, and again, introduce a lot of our engineers here at Public Works. Again, that will be held on February 20th, that's Thursday of next week, at 4 o'clock. The registration starts, and the launching of the containers begins at 4:30. Additionally, I want to take the opportunity to remind you, the airport is indeed also part of Public Works, and this weekend, on Saturday, is the grand opening of the PGC Driving Range. The grand opening is at noon, so again, I wanted to take the opportunity to remind you, they will have a grand opening event out on Rampart Road at the Driving Range, so all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Now we are moving on to new items on our agenda on a public hearing regarding the ordinance to repeal the current takeout service ware at retail food establishments. We're going to have a staff report from Ms. Nancy Lockwood.
Mayor and City Council members and members of the public, Nancy Lockwood with the City's Public Works and Utilities Department. My title is Environmental Projects Manager, and I am going to talk first about styrofoam, also known as polystyrene or plastic foam. Those terms are used interchangeably, and I'll explain why in a little while. The ordinance in front of us today is a repeal of the existing ordinance and replacing it with an ordinance that incorporates all the elements of the old one and adding some new items to the prohibition. I'm going to start my presentation tonight and go over the purpose of the original polystyrene ban, especially for those of you who are newer on the council. I'll give you a status report on the implementation of it, how it went here in Watsonville, and then I'll talk about the addition, the proposed additions that would be incorporated in the new Chapter 6-6. So plastic foam is a concern because it breaks into small pieces, and when it gets in the environment, it can be carried into our waterways, including our wetlands, the Paharo River, and the Monterey Bay Sanctuary. As you know, our wetlands and creeks and the Paharo River all connect to the Monterey Bay and the Pacific Ocean. Bits of plastic foam are mistaken as food by birds and fish and other marine mammals, and can cause their death. Another problem with plastic foam is that it's not locally recyclable, and all other types of plastic are accepted in the city's recycling program, except styrofoam and other types of plastic foam. The reason for that is there's just not a market for it, and part of that is due to the chemical makeup of the product, and also that it is so filled with air bubbles that it is costly to transport it, and once it reaches its destination and melted down, there's not much material left to it. Right now, there's no economically feasible option to recycle plastic foam. In March of 2009, the City Council adopted Chapter 6-6 that prohibited the use of polystyrene foam packaging by restaurants, cafeterias, and other food providers for takeout food service ware. The implementation of that ordinance was overall smooth, and near-universal compliance has been achieved in Watsonville by our businesses and events. Our education staff has noted a decrease in polystyrene food packaging waste when they do litter cleanups along the roadways and trails and in our wetlands, likely as a result of the ordinance. Of course, there's also less of that type of food packaging in our trash and going to our landfill. But we're still seeing other types of plastic foam products, and they're commonly found in the parks, certainly on beaches, along the road sides. And these are items that are left over from picnics, or blown out of trash cans in parks. Often, in the evenings, the trash can in a park may be full. People have tried to do the right thing, but then maybe raccoons or the wind comes along, and the material is scattered and it's out in the environment. The plastic coolers, you've probably seen this item, they blow out of the back of a pickup, or they're tossed out, or they break apart so easily, people try to cram them into garbage cans, and again, they end up out in the environment. Another source of plastic foam is plastic packaging peanuts. If you try to throw them away, they have a way of, I don't think they jump out, but they manage to land in the street, they come out of the garbage dumpsters, when the dumpsters are tipped, and they end up in the streets and the parking lots and get washed into our waterways. The proposed changes in the new Chapter 6-6, in addition to all of the items previously included that related to takeout food packaging, the new definition would include cups, bowls, plates, the coolers, pool and beach toys, and packing peanuts, all items that were sold retail. And it would also include a new definition of the prohibited material. Instead of referring to it as polystyrene foam, the proposal is that we would call it, we'd redefine the material prohibited as plastic foam. And the reason for that is that plastic manufacturers are now making other types of plastic, in addition to polystyrene, into foam products. So there's lots of different kinds of plastics. Now, many of them are being made into foam. So to make sure that we restrict plastic foam from the environment, that new definition would help us out there. These changes that are proposed are consistent with ordinances already in place in the County of Santa Cruz and the Cities of Santa Cruz and Capitola. Alternative products are already available for almost all common uses of plastic foam. And there are products made out of cornstarch, sugarcane, and paper, and they'll decompose if you put them in the compost, or if you throw them in the garbage, they'll break down in the landfill, unlike the plastic items that would stay there forever. Another alternative is durable items that you use over and over again. So lightweight plastic plates can be used for a picnic, and washed and used over and over again, and the same thing with a durable cooler. So there's some exclusions from the proposed ordinance that would include plastic foam for electronics and medical supplies, and also meat trays, food packaged outside of the City of Watsonville, and also insulation that's used in building construction, and also flotation devices where the plastic foam is encased in a more durable material, for example, a surfboard, a boat, or, as I mentioned, insulation materials for construction. So the staff recommendation is to repeal Title 6 and replace it with a new Chapter 6-6 entitled environmentally acceptable packaging and products. And that ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, I know I'm very interested in this issue, but one of the few questions that I have is, you go to the dollar stores or all these stores, and that's all they have is styrofoam, because it's very cheaply accessible, and that's what our community is going for. So would that prohibit the sale on those kind of stores?
Yes, that's correct. And in terms of, could I mention, you said the cost is very cheap, and usually styrofoam is the cheapest or one of the cheapest, but paper, thin paper plates often are very, very inexpensive and serve almost the same purpose, usually adequately.
Yes, I know, but I mean, when you go to these stores, that's, I mean, people are just enticed by, and a lot of these stores just carry styrofoam, that's all they carry. They don't even carry paper, because they don't want to give people an option, I guess. I don't know what the issue is, but that was my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Bilicich?
You said there would be exceptions, medical supplies, things like that. So if people get these things at their home, what do they do? Just put them in the trash like normal?
That would be correct.
So, but all of the styrofoam and some plastics will be gone?
Let me clarify, the ordinance, the proposed changes in the new ordinance, it would prohibit the retail sale of the picnic supplies and... sale of the picnic supplies and styrofoam, plastic foam toys, and things like that. And it wouldn't restrict what you threw away in your garbage. So if you had medical supplies, or if you bought a TV and it was packed in that, you'd still have to throw that in the garbage.
Bubble wrap, things like that.
Yeah, but we're not, that actually wouldn't fall under this ordinance. It only applies to, and it's described in the draft ordinance in rather scientific detail. It talks about how air is blown into the molten plastic, and that's what creates this very lightweight product that then causes the problems in the environment. So we wouldn't be banning any other types of plastics in this ordinance.
It's just interesting because, you know, plastic is something that, when it came, it was great. Everybody's so happy. We have this great product. And it seems like more and more, we're banning things that, but then again, we invent new things to take its place. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
This is an updating of an ordinance that's already in place. This is not a creation of a new ordinance. Am I not correct on that?
It's my understanding that when there were a number of changes, it was advised that we repeal the old and replace it with a new. And perhaps our city attorney or the city clerk could address why we're doing it that way?
Well, I requested the agenda item, but if the city attorney wanted to answer that. But I believe it's because there's, and I'll talk in the discussion. But my point being that this was an ordinance that was in place previously, and what's in front of us is repealing that ordinance and putting in an ordinance that includes these other products. Am I not correct?
Correct.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
How are we gonna go about with the enforcement on this?
What we've done in the past, and we've been successful with first sending a letter to all businesses, and then following up with a visit, not to every single business, but on a complaint basis. And when we have run into problems where we've found noncompliance, we've talked to the business owner. Usually, the problem is they've purchased supplies, and they really just don't want to throw them away. And so we work with them and come up with an agreement on when they're gonna use them up and then not buy them again. So...
I think with the peanut situation, I know that there are many people that get things shipped to them, so there's gonna be quite a bit of discard that those come in from their sources that they're purchasing from. So that's why I was concerned about how it's gonna be, you know, if you find that one garbage bin that's full of peanuts, and it's because of what they're getting shipped to them, it isn't their fault that's how they're getting shipped, but that they don't need to be penalized in that process. The other question I have is, I know that you were mentioning that it was for meat, that you were gonna go ahead and exclude that, but in going to the grocery store, you have egg cartons. I have had produce in the styrofoam containers as well. And I've also had some other type of packaging that's been done that's using the meat trays as well. Are we going to make sure that they look at the vendors that they're using that are bringing in that produce and see if they can make some alternatives? I mean, is that our process that we're gonna go through with them?
Well, the ordinance would exclude food packaged outside the city of Watsonville. So I would think that the products that you're referring to, such as eggs and some produce, are most likely packaged outside of Watsonville. But if they were packaged inside of Watsonville, they would fall within the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez?
What type of timeline are we gonna give restaurants and businesses to sort of like phase out what they have?
Well, the ordinance would go into effect 30 days after the final reading. And, but like I said, we, in the past, when we've dealt with this issue with both styrofoam and also plastic bags, we've been very reasonable. There has not been need for any enforcement. And because this material is so bulky, stores don't usually keep that much of it on hand. And so if they have some after 30 days and they could use it up, that seems like a reasonable exception.
Does you have a question, Councilmember Montesino?
No, I can make one of those comments, so let me go for it.
No further questions? Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to those members in the audience that are wishing to comment on this particular agenda item.
Yeah, I've worked with some of this stuff several years back, and it is on the compost part. The question I ask is how quick does this stuff depose after you get it into the landfill? Do you have an answer for that?
Did you have any other questions? They can answer it after you've asked all the ones that you have.
The reason why I'm asking this is out at Monterey Bay Academy, I took care of their garbage for several years, and this came up through Santa Cruz that the academy had to go to that recycling. And so they went to it, and I was doing all the compost out there. So we put it into the compost, and for four years, we put it into it, and it never did fire gradable at all. We had to start putting it into the garbage and sending it to the landfill because it never did break down, period, in four years. We had a great big problem with that. And yet, the company that they were buying from said it would depose down, and it never did. So that was one of our big problems we had out at MBA, is the stuff never did break down, period. So that was something that you might want to check into because we had a huge problem out at the academy because we had our own compost deal, and I had to go back out in the compost and get the stuff out of there. And we had to send it to the landfill because it wouldn't depose back down, period. None of it did in four years. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, what you might want to look at.
And can we please get your name for the record before you?
Jim Bacon.
Thank you.
Some of the early products that were made available were later found to be, technically, they should have decomposed, but they didn't decompose in people's backyard composting or even some of the more, the open-air compost operations. And it really required a very high level of technological composting in order to make those things break down. Materials have evolved, and I've been told they're better. Some of these items are made out of cornstarch, and if they're put in the landfill, eventually they're gonna break down, unlike plastic, which literally, you know, never breaks down. But it's an evolving industry, is the making of compostable food service ware, which is what we're talking about now, that doesn't leak when you put the food in it, and makes it to the person's home or wherever they're gonna eat it without coming apart, but at the same time, will break down in the composting. So to answer the concern is that materials are still evolving, but this ordinance does not require the use of those materials. It considers them an option.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address this on this particular agenda item?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers and staff. My name is Laura Casa. I'm the Executive Director of Save Our Shores. And I first just want to thank you, just thank you for your public service, because I know you don't often get thanked or get thanked enough. So thank you for that and taking on this issue tonight. I know I worked with the council on the original ban on foam containers, and I want to tell you how successful that's been. So before, we had any bans on styrofoam food containers within this county, and then after these bans went into effect, we saw a decrease of 75% of these food containers. We do cleanups in creeks, on streets, on beaches, all sorts of waterways and sloughs. That's six years of data compiled, so I have all that information. I think that's a huge success. But what we were finding is styrofoam pieces, which we track separately on our data cards, were going up and up and up, thousands and thousands of pieces every year. So the city of Capitola, a couple of years ago, instituted this ban, the first ban in the whole world, retail sale of styrofoam disposable products. And for the first time, we're seeing a decrease. We would see an average of 77 pieces of styrofoam picked up at every cleanup we did. That was before the ban went into effect. Between Capitola, city of Santa Cruz, county of Santa Cruz now, in just two years, that number's down to 44 pieces. So if we can add Watsonville to that, how much more of a decrease we can have. So that's been very effective. I think we can also work with those other jurisdictions that have already done this to help with outreach, and it's worked. We've had stores that have said, "Well, we only have styrofoam. What are their options?" They do have paper plates, and they do have other relatively inexpensive items. So I think that can really happen and not be a big disservice to this community. We're also happy to help with spot checking. Save Our Shores as volunteers, we've been going out to check how stores have been doing with the bag ban. We're happy to do that with compliance with the foam as well. And I would just like to say that we really want to see this move forward because those styrofoam peanuts are difficult to clean up. It's costly to the city to clean up styrofoam, much more costly probably than any other product. So thank you very much for taking this issue up tonight, and if we can be helpful, happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Dobie Jenkins, 35, Loma Prieta, in the great Northwest Territory of Watsonville. With respect to the peanuts, which can be a real problem, I think, particularly in waste management, you can return peanuts, those little white peanuts that you are omnipresent in packaging, to the UPS store. They'd love to have your peanuts back because they use them for their packaging. Now, whether they're going to be able to use them in their setting of services, I'm not sure if that's a retail sale or a service, I'm not sure, but they do take the peanuts back, and then they ship them someplace else.
Thank you. Any other comments during our public hearing on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and return it to council for additional discussion. Councilmember Dodge?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move forward the consideration of an ordinance to repeal the current takeout service at retail food establishments in its entirety and a new chapter of the Environment Acceptance Packaging Products Code to expand on the items that are listed in the staff report, including retail sale of cups, plates, bowls, coolers, and beach toys, packing peanuts or other packaging materials, except as accepted.
And I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Montesino. Discussion? Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, so I have a question because one of the things that I see a lot of our Hispanic communities, mom and pop shops, is that when they transfer ownerships, and I don't know if they do get, this is just my perception, but they all of a sudden forget and start bringing back styrofoam. So if we're gonna put this letter for them together, could we also tell them about just all the information that we have for the recycling products?
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
And I wanted to add to that, too. I think it's an opportunity for us. We were very successful, I believe, in when we banned plastic bags and started using recycled material and other bags to get them out, and I think our community really accepted that. It's well-known in south of the border, in Mexico in particular, which my personal experience is that they don't give out plastic bags. People bring bags to be able to take away their groceries from the store. So I thought it was a very successful campaign. And I look at this campaign as an extension, possible campaign, as an extension to educate our community on what styrofoam does do and how it does pollute the environment. I think our young people are very active in a variety of programs, including those at Save Our Shores and Watsonville Wetlands and such. And we've made it part of the norm to be able to have them interact with the environment. I think this is just taking it to another level. So I would count on staff with our nonprofit partners to take this unique opportunity to be able to educate our community a little bit more, because it's gotta start somewhere. And with this ordinance, we're actually starting it here around the Monterey Bay. We're starting here in Watsonville. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead, and there's a motion on the floor, and we'll do a roll call. Belisic?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is also a consideration of our Watsonville Municipal Code, changing the thickness requirement of the plastic reusable bags. And with that, we're gonna hear from our Public Works and Utilities Department? Same folks? Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, so this is an amendment to the existing ordinance, chapter six dash seven, section 101E. And it would amend our ordinance to change the thickness of the definition of the reusable bag and also require that bag to be made with recycled material. And so first, I'll give you some status report on implementation of the bag ban, which happened about a year and a half ago. And then I'll talk about the amendment, and then I'll discuss the fee that's charged for the plastic bag, for the paper bags, because that was an issue of interest. So why did we restrict plastic bags? They create a hazard to wildlife when they're released into the wetlands and the ocean. They're blight as litter in our neighborhoods, and they're made from a nonrenewable resource. In June of 2012, the city council adopted a chapter six dash seven with a stated intent to reduce single-use plastic carryout bags and to encourage the use of reusable bags. The existing ordinance prohibited the provision of single-use plastic bags for carryout. It imposed a fee for the purchase of paper bags for carryout. And the fees worked like this. Starting in September of 2012, when the ordinance first went into effect, the fee for the paper bag was 10 cents. After one year, which would have been just last September, the fee for the paper bag went to 25 cents. There were some exemptions built into the ordinance. We're not proposing changing any of these things. But individuals who are receiving WIC or food stamps or other government assistance programs are exempt from the fees. Also, exempt from the fee or from the bag ban is items, are items like ice cream, other wet items, food sold in bulk, greeting cards, and the ordinance lists a few other items that wouldn't be practical to sell without the plastic. Before the implementation of the ordinance, staff did quite a bit of education. We talked to our residents, to the retail establishment. We provided thousands of bags at the annual Earth Day, Day of the Child event, and by standing out in front of the grocery stores and talking to people and giving out the bags. Implementation was smooth, and compliance was overall good. Businesses were also notified by letter and visits. And our ordinance is compatible with ordinances in the county of Santa Cruz, cities of Capitola, and Santa Cruz. There's a problem that has come to our attention, and it relates to the definition of reusable bag. Some stores are providing plastic bags that meet the ordinance definition of reusable, but in a manner that does not encourage the reuse of shopping bags. So the existing ordinance includes two exceptions to the ban on plastic bags. It allows for the sale of a reusable bag as long as the bag is 2.2 mils or greater in thickness. It also allows for the provision of free reusable bags for limited special promotional periods. And so here's where the problems came to our attention. During most or all of the first year of the ordinance, which would have been from September 2012 to September 2013, several local stores gave away free bags, free plastic bags to customers. The bags met the reusable definition. And then more recently, stores are selling a plastic bag at the checkout stand. And then more recently, stores are selling a plastic bag at the checkout stand. It also meets the reusable definition. They're selling it for twenty-five cents. Customers are not observed to be bringing these or other bags back for reuse. As a result, more, not less, plastic is being used in these thicker bags. And importantly, the practice of single-use shopping bag continues. According to Save Our Shores, and we have someone here who can speak to this, this practice of selling the reusable bag for twenty-five cents has been observed in other jurisdictions, including others in Santa Cruz County as well as Monterey and Santa Clara Counties, as a way to comply with the letter of the bag ban ordinance, but while still supplying most customers with a plastic bag. This practice is not compatible with the intent of Chapter six dash seven to eliminate single-use plastic bags and encourage the reuse of reusable shopping bags. So the proposed amendment is a redefinition, a new definition of reusable bag. And the proposed text changes it, the thickness requirement from two point two five mils to four mils. And it also adds the last line requirement, shall contain a minimum of twenty-five percent post-consumer recycled plastic. There's so many bags being manufactured now and there's such demand for them that it's actually easy to get bags with post-consumer recycled plastic. It used to be challenging. It's not anymore. So that was added. So it's anticipated that the proposed amendment will discourage retailers from providing inexpensive plastic bags at the checkout stand. Customers who do choose to purchase the more substantial bags will have a monetary incentive to bring them back to reuse. And it's anticipated that the recommended changes will ensure full compliance of the ordinance with the city council's intent to eliminate single-use plastic bags and encourage the use of reusable bags. On the topic of the bag fee, staff was asked to consider the option of reducing the bag fee from twenty-five cents back down to ten cents, as it was in the first year of the ordinance implementation. And in researching this, it was found that Capitola had also looked into that and several weeks ago had decided to leave the bag fee at twenty-five cents. And the County of Santa Cruz fee is also remaining at twenty-five cents, and there's no plan in place to change it. The percentage of shoppers observed breaking their reusable bags to stores jumped from approximately ten percent to over sixty percent when the fee increased to twenty-five cents per bag in September of two thousand and thirteen. So it appears that the twenty-five cent per bag fee was a strong incentive to help people put new habits in place and to remember their reusable bags. Staff is recommending keeping the twenty-five cent per bag fee in place for this reason. So the recommendation is to amend the existing ordinance to change the thickness requirement for reusable bags to four mils or greater and made with twenty-five percent post-consumer recycled material. And that ends my presentation.
Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Lisich?
Do we have a sample of what this four mil bag is?
It's the same bag that the city has provided. Yeah, that's a four mil bag.
Durable.
And the two is what? What is a sample of a two point two? I mean, you know, it, there's a, yeah, I've seen those at local store. But people like those bags.
Really like.
They like them a lot. So what we're saying is we don't want those anymore? We're going to get rid of those and just have only these other kind? Is that my understanding?
What we're saying is that the store cannot, if they're going to sell a reusable bag, it has to have four mils of thickness.
You know that anytime we do this, the fees are going to go up to the consumer. Once we, I mean, we continue to make more and more regulations, they're on to the consumer. Do you see that?
Well, in the ideal world, and I know it's not simple, but people would bring their bag back over and over again. And when I was out looking at stores this week, I saw many, many, many people. I would say, well, at Nob Hill, seventy-five percent were walking in with their bag. So yes, they have made an investment, but they are reusing them.
Well, I know, I appreciate the bags, and I know you've distributed many, many, many bags. But I've heard consumers say time and time again, "I forget," or "I get in the store and then I don't want to pay for the bags," or, I don't know. I mean, it's, and I think it's good. We need to save. But by the same token, I'm concerned about, we're eliminating plastic. That was the thrust of everything. And paper bags now with the fee, that profit is going to the store, so it's increasing the consumer fee. Do you have any suggestions of how to fix that?
Well, the way the ordinance is set up, there are incentives and disincentives. And unfortunately, the fee is a disincentive for buying a new bag every time you go to the store. And so it, in many places, certainly here in Watsonville, it serves as a way to change the habits and remember the reusable bags.
I think people try to remember, but I think they forget. And a quarter seems like a lot of money to me, especially in this economy and this times. But even a dime's a lot. I mean, people don't want to pay a dime, and I know they don't want to pay a quarter. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez?
Thank you. This particular bag would have been generally in a store for a cost of more than a dollar. So now it's actually being reduced to twenty-five cents. If this is the only type of bag that's going to be available to be sold, and if the store is going to have to actually reduce the price of the bag that they would normally charge a dollar down to twenty-five, we need to make sure that they would have them available for sale because they were making more money on these bags at this thickness previously. I know that's a comment and not a question. However, my question would be that you, in five months' time, we've gone from ten to sixty percent in terms of the assessment to find that there, the switch from ten cents to twenty-five percent is, twenty-five cents has been that successful?
Actually, that's a question?
That's the question.
Okay. The change was noticed right away when the fee went to twenty-five cents.
Okay.
And could I make a clarification about the cost of the bag? Okay, the retailer, under the ordinance, is allowed to sell paper bags at the checkout stand, and the fee went from ten to twenty-five. They're not required to sell any reusable bags. But if they were to choose to sell a reusable bag, it would need to be four mils thick. And they could sell it at any, at any cost that made sense to them.
So in other words, the bag that we're now making them having to, having to have available for sale is this one, and they could charge more than twenty-five cents then?
Correct. And they don't have paper?
No, no, paper bags. They're required to, paper bags.
They're allowed to sell paper bags, and they can charge twenty-five cents. They have to charge twenty-five cents for the paper bag. Separate from that, if they choose to offer a reusable bag, which they're not required to do, it just has to be four mils thick. They can actually give it out for free, like for Earth Day if they want, or a promotional event, or they can charge what it costs them. But they can't give out thin free bags.
Like the other bag you showed us?
Right. And nor can they give out, sell thin twenty-five cent bags.
My other question on this was, we're, I know that it's for the purpose of them to bring in their own bags and for the encouragement, but when a paper bag is already combustible, you can already recycle it, it doesn't have a problem with the filling of the landfill, why are we charging twenty-five cents for something that is, that can decompose?
Oh, okay. The fact that it can decompose certainly solves one of the issues because it's not going to get out in the environment, be eaten by animals, create long-term blight. So I understand that side of it. The other piece, though, is when the ordinance was put in place, the council, one of the intents was to encourage reuse, which by reusing something, you're using less resources, whether that be trees or plastic or any other material. So the answer to your question is that it encourages less resource consumption.
Trying to encourage behavior.
Councilmember Montesino, additional questions?
Yeah, I got a question because one of the things, hopefully working with our nonprofit groups, because I've gone countywide, driving everywhere. But if you go to like the Safeway at Forty First, they got big signage over where you pick up the carts in front of the store, said, "Don't forget your bag." And that's, I don't see on any of our shopping center, because that's a great reminder because the times that I've, that I've gone to that store, it's like, whoa, before I walk in, there's, whoa, don't forget your, because a lot of, a lot of, I always forget my bags, but I'm always having in my car, there's like five bags in my car. So I think if we can encourage with our nonprofit groups, shopping, shopping centers to put more signs so people don't forget their bags in their cars, because I know it's behavior and it's encouraging.
So your question is asking about how many agencies we're collaborating with to educate the community about these various changes?
Yeah.
Would you like, was that a question?
Yeah, that was a question.
Okay. We actually do collaborate in a three-county area, and our jurisdictions in a coalition purchased a sign that has been installed at maybe five or six parking lots around Watsonville. It's green. I don't know if you can see this. It's the same color as the bag, and it says, "Remember your bags." And if you look around at Target, at Mi Pueblo, okay. And so they are where you get your, where you return your cart or where you park your car, but we have more that we can install.
Yeah.
And I also know that our nonprofit partner, Save Our Shores, has in the past offered to help us with those mural-type signs that go right in front of the store. And the other item I can mention, this is a decal that you could put in your car on the window or on the dashboard, and it would help you, it says, "Remember your bags," or that's the message here. So what I think I hear you saying, though, is you'd like to see more signage?
Yeah, more signage, so just for reminders for people.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Hernandez?
So I know there's some stores that offer like a promotional thing where you buy, if you buy like twenty bucks or thirty, forty bucks, you get a free bag. This will, I think, would, this would disencourage that practice, right? Because they wouldn't be able to give out those reusable bags that are two point two millimeters, and they would have to either give these for free or the charge twenty-five cents, right? For the, for the paper ones.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisich, you had another question?
I was just wondering about, more about the paper. We've talked about the whole purpose of eliminating the plastic. That was the purpose of the whole ordinance. And now we have paper, and then they said, "Well, we can't, we have to eliminate paper too because we have to be fair to the paper product people and the plastic people." But is it, is it possible that, I mean, can we, plastic is one thing, but paper is biodegradable. Can you go back to paper bags? That's what I hear a lot of people complaining, that they, they need the paper bags, they'd like the paper bags, they like the convenience. What happens if we went back to paper bags, not plastic?
Well, the intent of the ordinance was to reduce the use of single-use plastic bags, so that would be, take care of that. The second in the intent was to encourage the use of reusable bags. So by offering the free paper bag, it would, it would conflict with that second intent, but the council could decide that that's what you would like to do. But the original ordinance had the two goals. And so by providing the paper bag would negate the second goal.
Well, I think the main thing, though, that we're trying to do is eliminate plastic and take care of our wildlife. The paper just happens to be a side thing about not using resources. Thank you.
And I just had a question regarding the thickness of the bag, the changes that we're trying to implement. So at the state level, I know that there's proposals to sort of do a ban on plastic bags statewide. But part of that conversation has to do, not with the thickness of the bag, but the life of the bag. So the number of uses that, that you can sort of take it with you and the number of trips that it can accommodate. So I'm not quite sure if there's been that kind of evaluation on those bags that we're currently trying to eliminate for sale at the various local vendors, or if you had just some comments on that.
I think that we're all pioneers in this area, and I know there's, there's a lot of discussion about what the definition should be for reusable bags. And so what we're doing is we're following the City of Capitola. They just made the same amendment to their ordinance because at this point, we don't have the science or the available research facility or anything or to evaluate how many. I suppose we could come up with something, but we don't have that information available to us. So we're just going by what we feel like is a reasonable thickness. But if something changes and the state sets a new standard, we obviously would want to take a look at that.
Thank you. So now is the opportunity for members of the public wishing to comment on this particular agenda item?
I'm Rhea DeHart, members of the council, and I live in District Seven. Listening to this, Grocery Outlet, which is the bag that you, is one of my favorite bags, and I have an enormous number of Grocery Outlet bags. And if I double-bag those, I meet the requirement, right? If I put one that's two point five within another one that's two point five, I more, I go over the thicknesses that's required, right? So I can continue to just double-bag and use my Grocery Outlet bags under what you're proposing. I will not pay twenty-five cents for a paper bag. That really isn't really strong enough to hold some of the groceries you have in. What happens is if I don't have a bag, I just say, "Put them in my cart and take all my groceries and have them load them into my wagon." I am not going to pay for a bag when I already have, already paid for a whole lot of them that I have and that I wish to reuse.
Thank you.
Well, number one, I'd like to know where the money's going to. Who's keeping the twenty-five cents? Who's keeping the ten cents? Where's it going to? Number one. I would like to have a full audit on that. Number two, you've just saved the grocery stores millions of dollars, or you're putting double millions of dollars in their pockets. I've owned a grocery store. I know what grocery bags cost. So somebody's making some frickin' lot of money someplace, and that isn't right. This is another tax, hidden someplace. Where is the tax hidden? Let's make up your mind. It's hidden big time. Now, I'd like to know the next question. You're all being real quiet here now. Where's this little bag at you're carrying into the store now? Supposed to be free? Give me a break. It's costing five cents every time you walk into this store now. I bought the bag. I'm walking in to get my groceries. Ding ding, they're dinging me five cents now. Why am I paying five cents for my bag now? No, this is five cents. This is five cents. I'm taking my bag in, putting my groceries in it. I'm taking my bag in, putting my groceries in it, and Nob Hill is charging me 5 cents. Why? Where's that 5 cents going to now? Let's ask some answers. Where is that 5 cents going to? I need some answers. There's some money going someplace here. This is ridiculous. And charging for a paper bag? Come on. Knock maybe the plastic out, I can understand it. But knocking paper out, that's ridiculous and it's a tax. It's totally a tax where you're coming from. Wherever you want to go, it's a tax. Straighten it out.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, members of the council. How are we going to speak to this? I was in business for 44 years and I was in the grocery business. I get my newspaper now, when it rains, in a plastic bag. How are we going to get it if it's raining in climate weather? Do they have to get out and put it in our mailbox or hand it to us? How about people that have dogs and they walk their dogs and they carry a glove and they have to carry a paper bag to pick up the poop? What thickness do they need to pick up the poop? You have a dog, do you walk your dog? And you have to pick up the bag and put it in a little bag? Do you use a paper bag or a plastic bag?
But this is in reference to grocery.
Well, but you're still, it's a bag you gotta use. It's a reusable bag. I'm still, you're still using plastic and it's still going to the landfill. So, you know, I mean, we're to catch 22, really. There's a lot of good. Paper was great, but you know, we're saving a few trees because of that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Laura Cossett with Save Our Shores. This was a single-use bag ordinance. This is what we were going for. Something durable, something that people would remember to bring back. That's why the city spent so much money on those beautiful green bags that I use all the time and I see a lot of other people use as well. What we decided to do was to go out and check out what the stores were giving out once this ordinance went in place. And what we were finding is a lot of stores went to this little bit thicker plastic bag. Now, that wasn't the goal of the ordinance, to just have a little bit thicker plastic bag. These are still going to get in the ocean. These are still going to get into the sloughs, into the rivers. So this you can get at Grocery Outlet. This you can get at Santa Fe Market. This you can get at Big Five. Again, this isn't what we were trying to do. We weren't trying to get more little bit thicker plastic bags. But the definition says these are reusable. So we decided to count shoppers. So we counted 740 shoppers between October and November of 2013. Four of these bags were brought back. Four out of 740 shoppers. People are not reusing these. That's why staff has done a great job of researching, well, what can we do to change this? If you make it that thickness, people are going to remember those bags. People are going to bring them back. That's why we really need to change this ordinance. We would be a leader that other cities are looking for if we could move forward on this. Just a couple of other things I want to address. We do need to make sure there's a fee, even if you do keep this thickness. These are being handed out for free in a lot of places. So we do need to change the ordinance to address that. And taxpayers are subsidizing the cleanup costs of plastic bags. So 25 cents is a lot. Bring your own bag. You won't have to pay 25 cents. The people that want to pay 25 cents can, but why should all the taxpayers have to subsidize that and have to pay for cleanup? So it's not a tax, it's a fee for service. We did those murals at 41st Street. We will do as many murals as you want for free on any stores that you want. It works really well. Customers appreciate. They're $1,000. We have a partnership with a sign company. They'll do it for free. We do them in English and Spanish. We just put them up at Mi Pueblo and Salinas. We will make it happen. Certainly, we will help with outreach. I handed out a bunch of bags at a Salinas store just a couple of weeks ago. Shoppers want these bags. We get them in their hands and they're going to remember them. Once they pay one time 25 cents, they're going to remember to bring their bags back. So again, we can help with the outreach on that. The reason we want people to not use paper bags, what about climate change? What about fossil fuels that are used to create these? What about the water? It's a water-intensive process. We can do an easy switch to help the environment in all aspects. Yes, plastic is worse, but why don't we just get people into this habit? As Councilmember Dodge says, in Mexico, people just know to bring their own bags. It's possible and it's easy. Again, just want to extend our help and my time is up. Thanks for considering this tonight.
Thank you for your information. Any other members of the public wishing to address this on this particular comment? CNN, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and return it to council for discussion. Councilmember Dodge?
I'd like to move forward the consideration of ordinance for item 6 slash 7.101E of the Watsonville Municipal Code, changing thickness requirement of plastic reusable bags from 2.25 milligrams to 4 milligrams, containing a minimum of 25% post-consumer recycled material.
Thank you, second.
It'll be second by Councilmember Hernandez. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Dodge?
I think that we're moving forward. We'll be the first city in the state to request that these bags be sold. I think there was some confusion. I remember the time we used to give out blue chip stamps, but the way grocery stores operate and do business these days is not the same. The only question I've heard over the last couple of years, year and a half that we've imposed this plastic bag was from a local store that wanted to know if they had to put 24-ounce cans to have to charge for the paper bag that goes into that. That was the only question that I received on this. I believe that we're trying to alter. We're trying to educate the public, save some resources. I thought the comment about what it takes to be able to clean up other resources, excuse me, trash, plastic bags in particular. You can find, you would find those all over the community, blowing through the air and up and down through the alleys and the streets. Since we've imposed this ban, I believe that it's been successful and I'd like to see this motion go forward this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Belisic?
I, I think plastic is, it's important that we have it out of our environment. I've been, I'm convinced with all the things I've read. However, I do not like the paper part and I think it's kind of ridiculous that the stores are making a quarter or whatever they are. Monterey County, they're still handing out plastic bags. So we're ahead over here. We've done that and I think that's great. But I'm not going to support this until something's done about the paper bag and the cost of the paper bag. I think that they should be free again. People forget their bags. I think it's, I think more and more people are using the recycled bags. I think it's a good thing, but if they forget, why can't they have a paper bag? I just, I think that that's, I think people like these bags. I think they like taking them in. I like, they think they're stronger than a paper bag. But if they forget their bags, I just think it's wrong that the stores are making the profit on the bags. And it seems wrong to penalize consumers. Every time we turn around, something's happening to the poor consumer. So I'm going to vote no on this until the other part's cleaned up. Thank you.
Councilmember Carmen Gomez?
Two comments that I have to make. The first comment is, most of the paper bags are made of recycled material anyway. They're made of re-combusted paper products. I think that what we're going to find with this is the cost factor that the stores are going to have these available are going to shove up the price for a consumer to have to pay to get this bag. And then that's going to put more of the paper bag product that's out there that we're selling for, we're having them sell for 25 cents each. I think that we're going to see more of that occur. The other comment that I'd like to make, and that has to do with the recycling of these bags, the consumers putting the meat product, they're mixing it with some other stuff, they're taking it home, they're bringing it back, they're bringing the bacteria back into the stores. And I think that we're going to see a higher rate of some of these maybe E. coli situations occurring as a result to the recycling of these bags coming back into the stores. And I just want to make sure that somehow, in some way, we can get this monitored or figure out what's going on in a health department issue in respect to reintroducing bad bugs and bacteria back in by having to recycle things with those kind of food components recircling around in the bags again and again. So those are the two comments that I have on this.
Mayor Portem Hernandez?
You know, I think as a city or as a policy body, we have a responsibility to be stewards for the environment. You know, just in our city limits, we have precious sloughs, we have lakes, rivers. Just outside our limits, we have beaches. And it's our responsibility to protect them for future generations. I think that the purpose and the intent to charge a quarter for paper bags is to encourage reuse of responsibly-made bags like these. And I think that as a policy group, that's a good direction.
Good comments. Any additional discussion? I think we're ready for a vote. Belisic?
No.
Carmen Gomez?
I'm going to say no.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes? Yes. Motion passes, four to two. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
So moving on to new business, we do have a staff report from our city clerk and city attorney regarding the initiatives for district appointment and also election of mayor.
Mayor Cervantes in council. I will be giving the report regarding the initiatives process and the city attorney's men will be giving a report on the legal aspect of the council vacancy petition. On July 1st, 2013, Rick Deana, Yolanda Riz Deana, and Georgia Acosta filed a notice of intent to circulate a petition to amend the charter of the city of Watsonville to require the city to call an election whenever a vacancy occurs in the office of the council. At the same time, Rhea Dehart, Delia Mendez, and Kathy Perez also filed a notice of intent to circulate a petition to amend the charter to change the method of how the mayor is selected. On July 16, 2013, the petitioners were provided with the city attorney's titles and summaries as required by the California Election Code. The notices of intent and titles and summaries were published by the proponents on July 20, 2013 and the certificates of publication were filed with the city clerk's office on July 22. As provided by the election code, the petitioners needed 2,408 ballot signatures, which is 15% of the 16,052 registered voters in the city, as reported to the Secretary of State on February 25, 2013. The signed petitions were returned to my office on January 14, 2014. They had 4,099 signatures for the council vacancies petition and 4,070 for the election of mayor petition. On January 27, 2014, the petitioners were issued certificates of examination certifying the petitions were sufficient with 2,410 ballot signatures for the council vacancies and 2,423 ballot signatures for the election of the mayor. The Elections Code provides an amendment to a city charter proposed by a petition signed by 15% of the registered voters of the city shall be submitted to the voters at the next established election occurring not less than 88 days after the date of the order of the election. The council vacancy petition would replace existing Section 406 in its entirety and replace it with a new Section 406 to the charter of the city of Watsonville, requiring that if a vacancy occurs in the office of the council member, then the vacancy shall be filled only by the election of a new council member, to be held either at a general municipal election or at a special municipal election, which the council must cause to be held no later than 90 days from the date of the occurrence of the vacancy. The proposed initiative could also amend Section 1503 to add subsection K to define vacancy. The election of mayor initiative could replace existing Sections 500 and 504 of the charter of the city of Watsonville, requiring the council to elect the mayor and mayor Portem in the numeric order of the council district they represent. The financial impact. The Santa Cruz County Election Department examined the signatures at a cost of $6,400. The cost of a special election during a state primary is from $2 to $3 per registered voter. The city currently has 14,278 registered voters. Therefore, the cost of a special election could be from $28,000 to $42,000. The council will have to amend the 2013-2014 budget to appropriate such amount from the general fund. The recommendation for tonight is that the council accept the city clerk's certificate of sufficiency of the initiative petitions for council vacancies in the election of mayor and that they direct, that you direct the city attorney to return on February 25, 2014 with a resolution ordering the election of mayor and appointment of council vacancies initiative to be placed on the ballot for the election to be held on June 3, 2014. This concludes my presentation. Now, the city attorney will give his staff report and we'll both answer questions after that.
Okay, thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the timing of the elections that would occur under this new proposal. Article 13 of the city charter regulates Watsonville municipal elections and Section 1301 defines a special municipal election. So the charter provides for two types of elections. General elections, which are every two years in November, and special elections, which are other elections set forth in the Elections Code that happen throughout the year. Some are mail ballots, some are primaries, different types of special elections, but they're provided for by the state statute. Section 1302 then says, "All municipal elections shall be held pursuant to the Elections Code." Now, candidate elections are highly regulated and precisely timed events. Watsonville employees have not conducted elections themselves since 1994. Instead, the city contracts with the County Elections Department and county employees usually conduct the elections. The city does not own voting machines, voting booths, poll signs, or any other equipment necessary to conduct an election and does not have policies, procedures, customs, systems, or any kind of practice in place to conduct its own elections with its own employees. So without exception, the County Elections Department has been selected to conduct city elections because it provides competent, efficient, and economical service. The County Elections Department prepares the ballots, prints and mails the voter pamphlets, mails the absentee and military ballots, arranges for polling places, provides voting machines, delivers ballots to the polling places, assigns the polling places, ensures accessibility. ADA issues are complied with at each site, hires and pays poll workers and inspectors, delivers the ballots from the polls for counting, counts the ballots, recounts as appropriate, and returns a canvas of the ballot results to the city clerk. The last Watsonville standalone, single-council election was in District 1 in 1999 after the resignation of Al Alcala. Rafael Lopez was elected. There were approximately 705 registered voters in District 1 then. The county charged the city $8,694 to conduct that election. The replacement of Mr. Alcala took about six months. He resigned in February. The council first tried to appoint a successor. They couldn't reach a decision, so it went to the voters in that occasion. The time from the date of the election was ordered until the date of the election was 119 days. By way of a comparison, a general or special election conducted according to the Elections Code[1773.45] code will take a minimum of 114 days, just following the elections code. There are such items as military ballot mailings, which I think are 60 days. There's the time period for, I believe the time period for candidate statements is 88 days. So there's a variety of timelines that are set forth in my staff report. Since district elections were ordered in 1989, the council has had nine vacancies. All the vacancies were filled pursuant to a process that's been used consistently. Applicants are submitted, the council interviews the candidates during notice and open meetings. And as I said, only once during that time has there been an election to fill the vacancy. A group of citizens has proposed a ballot measure to change how the council's, the council vacancy is filled, and the proposal would prevent the council from appointing to a vacant seat and instead requires an election to the vacant seat at either a general municipal election or at a special municipal election, which the council must cause to be held no later than 90 days from the date of the occurrence of the vacancy. And as I described, if you have 90 days from the occurrence of the vacancy until you have to conduct the election and you have some of the deadlines of 88 days, the deadline to consolidate elections is 114 days, I believe. And so the county elections office may not be, well, they certainly cannot conduct the election under the elections code. They can conduct an election, but it would be a unique Watsonville election with some sort of process that somebody would have to develop, presumably the council, by way of ordinance in order to shorten the time limits so that people would be allowed to declare a candidacy, do the other things that are necessary. Elections code, elections are preceded by a number of deadlines required by the election code. The deadlines are, for the most part, if not exclusively, determined by counting back from the date of the election. The elections department, election deadlines for the November 2014 election are on the Santa Cruz County Elections website, and I cite that on my report. The county elections department prepares a similar administrative calendar for each elections, election that it conducts, special in general. The city clerk advertises the availability in local newspapers, posts on the city website, and gives the public a period of time to learn of availability of the seat. And because of the statutory requirements, it would be impossible, or probably impossible, to consolidate a proposed vacancy election with a county election. Again, you can be, you can have both elections, but you may have situations where the candidacy, candidacy election is occurring within a week, two weeks, three weeks of the special or general election. Not illegal, but it's just cumbersome. Because of the last 90-day deadline, timeline, the city may eventually have to develop and the council adopt a special election process by ordinance for vacancy elections. There are, and I would just say, there are 478 cities in California, all but 121 are general law cities, all 357 general law cities because they're regulated by state law. Appoint, have the council point to vacant council seats. There are 121 general law cities. Based on the information available to me, only one of those cities, Vallejo, prevents its council from appointing to vacant council seats. And in Vallejo, as from my read of the city charter, provides that a midterm council vacancy is filled first by the unsuccessful candidate from the most recent election. And if that person's not available, then, and only then, does it go by way of appointment. If the city did have to conduct a vacancy election, they would have to either find an opportunity for the county elections department to hold it, which may or may not be difficult depending on what time of year it is, because if the county elections department is conducting an election on a schedule for a general or special election, and Watsonville's conducting its own election, the same or similar time, they may or may not be able to do it. If the city, if they can't do it, there are private companies that you can hire to conduct the election. It happens, it's not unprecedented, but you then have to go out and hire them to do it. City cannot have a mail-in election to fill the vacancy because the city charter does not provide for mail-in candidate elections. And the city clerk, I think, did an informal survey of a private election company, and I think they're, this is a telephone call, but they were indicating a range of $25,000. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So that was a report on both of the initiatives. So if we can have our council questions at this point? Councilmember Dodge?
So for, I guess the question I have on, on what you're referring to, the district appoint, appointee appointment, what's, in our, in our staff report, which, which listed the vacancies that have occurred since 1991, started since 1991. And that was, it also listed the process that was used when councilmember Campos's vacancy in 1998, and then the process that was used to appoint former councilmember and mayor Judy Dorian Nielsen was the process that we can, we've used over, there was upheld in a court ruling, under appeal currently, but it's a process that we've, we've used to fill the last vacancies since 2009, when councilmember Billisich was appointed? Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that, that process at this current time, even though it's under appeal, it's already survived a court test. Am I, am I not correct?
The Superior Court said there was a vacancy and that Mayor Vallejo could participate in the election of a successor. That's on appeal.
But that was a process that was established during that vacancy in 1998 when councilmember Campos left.
Same process, all the way.
Become supervisor, I believe, correct?
Yes.
And then, and then councilmember, former mayor Judy Dorian Nielsen was appointed underneath that process to represent District 6 at that time.
Yes.
Am I correct? So that's the process that we use now?
Yes.
Okay. Just for, for those little reference points. So underneath that process, there was five applicants for the District 7 vacancy in 2009?
Yes.
According to the chart? There were five applicants.
Yes.
That was the majority of applicants that we had for an appointment at that, at that time?
Yes.
Has there been any uncontested races in District 7 since that time? I mean, there, all the races since that time have been uncontested. Am I correct? After there was five applicants?
On District 7? Yes.
But since that time, there was uncontested races?
Yes.
All right. And previously, also, that, that being the remainder of that, I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine times that there's been vacancy to by councilmembers passing away in office, both representing District 7. There has been only one, one time that there was only one applicant, the rest had two or more applicants.
Yes.
All right. So that's, so there's a history of people applying for the positions, but not necessarily. There's uncontested races after that?
Yes.
Okay. That being said, then my next question pertaining to the statute, the dates that you were talking about under the district appointment, the 90 days from when the vacancy is correct, I mean created, is that what, is that what the petition, that was, that's what's in front of us now?
Yeah, it'd be 90 days from when the vacancy occurs.
Okay, well, let's say.
Election has to happen within 90, 90 days from the vacancy.
So in that scenario, I get, let's say that, that I get attacked by some madman and I'm assaulted and I'm in, and taken out of the picture. My vacancy would be, happen, and then the election would be within 90 days and when it not, if it happened today, would not coincide with an election in June or November?
Yeah, it would not coincide with established election dates because we have to do it within 90 days.
So then somebody running for, for the district that was vacancy and the district that I represent would be, would have an election to fill the term that I have remainder? And then since my term expires in November, they'd have to run again in November?
They could have to run in November again.
So you'd have the possibility of three elections between now and November in that, in that district created by my absence vacancy. Correct?
Two, two elections, one.
Two elections called for plus a special election.
The special election, and are you?
Oh, okay.
Did you refer to the June election also?
Yes.
Yeah, so there could be three elections in one year.
Okay. I'm concerned about the time limit that this involved due to some of the, what you say, cost or some of the requirements that would be put by this where we can't, the county would be possibly unavailable to run a vacancy election. Am I correct? Is that what you're saying, that the county would be unable to, if it wasn't a regular scheduled election, the possibility for them to?
I talked to the city clerk, and this is, she's the one who actually talked to the county elections officer, and it's my understanding, depending on how close the timing was, if the elections office, for example, is conducting an election on, say, the end, the 30th day of the month, and one of our elections came up on the 15th day of the month, and they're still, they want to get their machines ready and get their people hired and do the things they need to do, there may be a conflict, is what the elections office told us. They didn't say they wouldn't do it.
No, no, okay, then that'd be the term that I would use, there's a possible conflict.
Yes.
Okay. Those are the questions I have at the current time. Thank you.
So in that situation of a possible conflict, that's where you indicated the potential cost of having to hire a private organization to oversee and manage the operations that you usually see at a, at election time?
To conduct the election, you'd have to have, the most likely candidates would be the city, and as I indicated, there are two people in the city clerk's office, and they, they don't have the ability or the machinery or the equipment or the processes in place to conduct with city, city employees. Second option is the county elections office. If they're tied up, that puts you into the category of private companies, which I think conduct elections in Southern California.
Yes, some, some of them do.
Some of the elections in Southern California and other states, so you'd bring one of those companies in.
And the, that estimate that they provided was $25,000?
That was $25,000 to conduct the elections. We could still have fees from renting the equipment, machines, equipment for the polling place, and whatever the county elections department charged them to use their voting registration list.
And which fund does that money come from?
The general fund.
The same fund used to pay for public safety? Yes. Police, fire. Councilmember Hernandez?
I got a question. So since all of the appointees have ran their election and they've been unopposed, what's the difference in an election that's opposed and unopposed? Is there a general, or is it basically the same, or?
Well, there's an elections code that if there's an election that is unopposed, the council could decide not to have an election and appoint the person that was running, the only one. However, because our elections are district elections, we always have someone, someone on the ballot or a measure, so most of the time, all of our council members have gone on the ballot.
And at what cost?
It is usually at a municipal election, so whatever the cost is at that time, around 20,000.
So then, under this new proposal, we would have to do, in essence, two elections at full cost?
May.
As opposed to one?
May.
May.
Councilmember Carmen Gomez?
The question that I have is the, the section about the financial impact. And what it says is the cost of a special elections during the state primary is $2 to $3. The cost of a special election would be 28 to 42 grand. However, in this case, if it happened to be a special election, the number of registered voters that we would have maximum in a section of districts would be about 2885. So wouldn't we be putting the 2885 against the?
No, I was, this financial impact is for this. I was not referring to the district elections. If it's a district election, it would be a different charge. And the county elections department has their prices, their costs on their website, and it depends if, most of the district registered voters are from 1,000 and over, except for District 7 that has more than 2,000. So what the county charges for a jurisdiction, which could be a district, is from 1,000 to 25, 1,000 to 2,500 voters, it charges $8 per voter. So it just depends what, how many registered voters we have in that district that we would have to multiply by eight. So if we just say District 1 has 1,000 voters, it would be $8,000 approximately.
Okay. And again, I, this is an initiative that's going to the voter, so I, most of this conversation would happen if this were to pass and come back to council for us to evaluate what to do and how to implement this if it were to go through. Would that be correct?
Once it passes, the council would have to follow.
Right, right. So our dialogue at this point is just conversation of some hypotheticals, and it's up to the voters, which they are coming before us with their petition.
Yes, we're just giving you the facts as to what the timing, the problems that it would cause.
Councilmember Dodge?
Well, just a clarification on the, on the election of, of mayor, under the petition that was presented in front of us, that would fill the vacancy, excuse me, that would start with the, the district that was last, I don't know the terminology because I don't have it in front of me, so, the, the district that last had a member representing them as, as mayor?
Yes.
So we would start off at District 7?
District 7.
And then, then it would go to District 1, to District 2, to District 3, under the scenario presented in the petition?
That's how I read it.
Right, so, so, so if, if that was successful in its, its efforts, then we would start with District 7 and then repeat, the vice mayor would be from, excuse me, the mayor would be from District 7, the vice mayor would be District 1? And then the next following year, the vice mayor would be from District 2?
Yes.
So it would go 7, 1, 2?
Yes.
So District 6 would not be, would be not in the equation until the whole process is already gone through?
Yes.
And just to touch back, this isn't a hypothetical conversation because we have costs and figures associated if you're able to consolidate an election. So team up with the county elections department, and in that situation, it would cost minimum $8,000. In the situation where the 90-day requirement, you're not able to consolidate with the county elections office, and you have to perhaps go hire a private company to oversee the election, then you're looking at a minimum of $25,000. So those are actual facts and figures attached to, to this.
Well, then.
And just another question that I had with the selection of the mayor. It does indicate that chronologically it would work 7, 1, 2, 3, except in the situation where someone in line to be a mayor reserves the right to delay becoming mayor. Then it says that they can delay it and switch with the mayor pro tem, and then in the next election, they could switch back and actually be mayor. So it's like a pass. And then the next paragraph over, it's talking about refusing the right to take the position. So in that situation, it seems to indicate that chronologically it could fall apart because you're just passing and delaying for a year.
I guess it could happen.
Any other questions from council?
I just want one.
One more question.
One question. Because there, because there's possible scheduling conflict dates that you were arising to earlier pertaining to the 90-day vacancy, the time to run a campaign, the time to, you know, educate yourself to have, to the voters. educate yourself to, to the voters, et cetera, like that, would those difficulties be in place if there was 120 days, for example?
Um, no. We would still, may not be able to consolidate with the county because this amendment does not provide to have the elections at established election date that they're set by the state. So we would still have that conflict, but we would have ample time to have a regular nomination period and call the election.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was my, my, my question because I certainly, while I believe that there, these, and I've said previously, these petitions were well intended, I, I believe that there was some, some difficulty timewise and so that would be, once that is statutorily accepted, then there, there's no way to alter the number of days to be able to accommodate some of the difficulties that could be faced possibly. Am I correct?
Once, once the, it's in the charter, then we follow the charter.
Once the election, if they were, if the petitions were successful in passing the elections, so-
Correct. If they say 90 days and this, the city will have to have an election within 90 days.
So, so the process for this is to, is we're looking at this to come back to, to, to return with the resolution calling for the election and, and on our next council meeting, something we can make the June 3rd primary election?
Yes.
What would, what would be the way, what would be possible for, I, I, I'm just trying to word it right so it doesn't really come out, you know, my thoughts. I think that there's a difficulty with the 88 days. If I thought that there was a diff, you know, that would better suited with 120 days to be able to account those things, does this council have the right to be able to put another opposition ballot, excuse me, not opposition, keeping the same language and everything that was offered in the petitions? Does this council have the right to be able to put something up that says, on the, on the ballot that says 120 days? It's just a question.
Council has the right to put something on that says 120 days and let the voters decide.
That's, that's what my question was, yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Bilicich?
Why are we talking about bringing this back when we already have the petitions here and they've fulfilled the requirements? Why do we have to bring it back in two more weeks? Why isn't it just done tonight like the last one was?
The last one, we didn't, the council didn't approve a resolution yet. We bring the resolutions, we're also bringing the naming places.
On consent agenda?
On consent agenda, yes.
See, no additional questions. We'll go ahead and turn this over for public input. So please, those wishing to speak on this particular agenda, just come up to the podium, just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. My name is Rick Dana and I live in the 7th District. I'm actually one of the proponents for the vacancy petition. My wife is the other and one of our neighbors, Georgia Acosta, is the third. Tonight, I'm going to tell you the three reasons why we did the petition. The first reason that we did it is we wanted to define vacancy and one of the reasons we wanted to do this is we do understand it's become a lawsuit and what we wanted to make an end to was the ability for a council member to vacate their seat and make a decision on the replacement at the same time. We wanted to define that and I believe we have. The second issue is very important and we discussed it here tonight, 90 days. Why 90 days? Well, we feel that 90 days is plenty of time for one of those seats to be empty. When one of those seats is empty, one-seventh of your community is unrepresented. They have no voice, no say. That could be during budget negotiations, that could be during a period of something very important for the city and one-seventh of your community is sitting out and we feel that's unfair. The third section here, and really the most important, is a problem with the district elections. None of you have received a vote except for Nancy in my own district. So what happens when one of these seats become vacant? Right now, essentially, six of you are choosing an appointee, but six of you have received no votes in that district, zero. You've never been put on the ballot in that particular district and that's a problem. So the way we see it is that when you look at an appointment, you really have two choices. Number one, try and decipher what the people of that district might want. Very difficult. You live in different districts. If we were looking at an election at large, we could make you responsible for the appointment that you choose for us because in an at-large election, all of you are on a ballot. In this particular case, you're not. Only one of you will be on a ballot for a district. In terms of the cost, I'm a little offended. I truly believe that research and facts and figures mean exactly that and I don't believe in this time period that you've looked at the cost of this election. We're not talking about a full city election here. We're talking about a small district election. That's what we're looking at, not a city election, a small district election. Even if we use the figure that my friend Beatrice has used, $25,000 for a small district election, I believe that's absurd, but let's use that figure for a moment. $25,000, that's less than 1% of your annual budget, less than 1%. You spent $50,000 two weeks ago on consultant fees, $50,000 to figure out how to tax us. That would cover two elections at the cost of $25,000. And I'm sorry I've gone over my time, but let me end quickly. You made a commitment, a four-year commitment when each of you took those seats and I'm proud to say that most of you have completed it, but these vacancy elections should be far and few between. I think the person had the best excuse was Dale Skilicorn. He passed away. But the rest of these individuals, again, you've made a four-year commitment, I believe you should try and complete that and I believe vacancies should be rare and when they do occur, let the people vote. Thank you.
Any other comments on this particular agenda item?
Rhea Dehart, resident of District 7, and I'm speaking to you about the Let the People Vote campaign. Today, there was an article written by Kathy Perez with the headline in the Register Parroonian, "Change is What the People Want." Great article by her because I think she answered all the objections that three council people had, one planning commissioner for Watsonville had, one board representative, a school board representative had, and one labor representative who incidentally doesn't live in the city of Watsonville or as a matter of fact, in Santa Cruz County. I think all those objections that were raised that Kathy Perez really answered in her article because it is a call for change. When you have three petitions that you get the amount of signatures we got, which is really a first in this whole area, three petitions, part of the same campaign, where each petition got over 3,000 to 4,000 signatures. Cumulatively, that's 11,000 signatures over those three petitions and you think that you only have 14,000 registered voters in the city of Watsonville. That's a real call for change, but what I want to do tonight is to thank each and every person, registered voter out there who signed those petitions. And when I look at the people who signed them, it was like Tip O'Neill said, "Politics is local." It started with your family and your friends that signed them and then you went out to the neighborhood, to the person next door, to the person down the street, to the person around the corner. And then thirdly, you networked with every social gathering, whether it was church or whether it was a fraternal organization or whether it was other clubs that you belong to, people signing. And then there were people who heard about the petitions on the television or on, through the media and they're calling you, asking you, "Can I get, get a petition? Can I sign? Can I circulate them?" And then there was another whole category that was very interesting. That is people who lived just outside the city limits, just outside the city limits, but they do business here in the city, they have businesses here in the city and they were calling saying, "Boy, we wish we could sign, but we will circulate a petition for you. We'll give them to our friends and our neighbors." This was a matter of asking your neighbor. Tip O'Neill lost his first election because somebody across the street said, "You know what? You didn't ask me for your vote. We asked those people out there for their signatures and so this is a real call for change."
Thank you for your comments.
While I was behind this drive, I got over 500 signatures. So I can tell you, I walked the streets. I walked them many days. It was slow, but I was out there and I walked. I'm from the 7th District, my name is Jim Bacon, but I was in the 6th District, I was in the 7th District, San Blanca Lane, I was out on the airport, I walked and I walked and I'd do it again. I believe in letting the people speak and they spoke. I had only three people that turned me down. Everybody was willing and more and happy to sign these and most of them wanted to sign it a different way, but I really don't want to say the way they wanted it because if I did, it would be a different way completely and we'd be in a political battle. So we'll just let it be at that for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public wishing to address this on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor Members of the City Council. My name is Pedro Castillo. I lived in District 4. Just some commentary and observations on this issue and my recommendation is, they've got the signatures, put it on the, the June 2nd, June 3rd election cycle. Three points having to do with number one, cost. Well, $25,000 is a lot of money to me. It not, might not be a lot of money to a number of folks, but it is a lot of money to me and if someone, thank God, does not happen, something happens that there's a vacancy and the city has to run an election, it's going to cost around $25,000. So I think that's something that's, has to be considered and we have to tell people that are going to vote on this item just exactly how much it might cost. So that's one item. The second is what the city attorney pointed out in his, in his staff report, his analysis, quote, "Such a proposal is unusual and, and may be unprecedented in California." Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, for your insight. If this occurs, if this happens, it'll be one of two of the 478 cities in California that makes vacancies in this manner. And then lastly, let's look at the past history. I am a historian. My name is really Dr. Pedro Castillo, professor of history at the University of California Santa Cruz. When there was a vacancy created by Member Casmeric, Bobida was appointed 1991. When there was a vacancy of Mr. Campos, Derry Nelson, Nielsen was appointed in 1998. When there was a, a vacancy of Derry Nelson in 2006 and Erickson was appointed. When there was a vacancy of Skilicorn vacancy in '09, Bilicich was appointed. No issues. No one complained about the process. Nobody complained about that. But when we have the Alejo vacancy and Rios is appointed, when we had the neighbors vacancy and Hurst is appointed, when we had Bersamín a vacancy and Hernandez appointed, then we begin to have complaints about the process. If we're really talking about democracy, this is democracy there, there. They ran, they were appointed. The bottom line is Ms. Cervantes, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Dodge, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Montesino, these folks don't like you, don't like who you are, don't like what you represent, don't like the 1988, 89 decision by the courts moving from at-large to district election. If we want to change what happens up there, let's run people for office. Kick them out every four years if we don't like that. That to me is democracy, not these petitions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
What does Tony Campos, Luisa Lejo and Manuel Bursman have in common? They all broke their constitutional oath to defend the Constitution. It's an appeal, yes, that a vacancy is a vacancy when it's unoccupied, but the definition of that becomes a bunch of legal crap that's being played out while the people in Watsonville are getting fed up with the little sideshow you guys got up here. And that's what it is. The more you screw around with what you're doing, the more you're going to lose in tax revenue. It's time that you just come clean. The people have gotten their signatures, that is democracy. You're now starting to realize that the cost of voting and the cost of freedom is not free. Remember, this is a capitalistic society. What the hell is free? So you tell me what it's going to take to change a body if it doesn't take us collecting signatures to change you to end this social experiment that we no longer want thrown upon us? You forget what the Constitution says, the people who can, should overthrow the government that has been pushed upon them. I defended that. I got hurt for that and I will always defend the Constitution against enemies, foreign and domestic. If anyone has a problem with that, come and look me up at my house.
Good evening, my name is Nick Belichick and I'm just responding to this so-called doctor of history and everything like that. Their city attorney can explain to you, 1998, there was opposition to the process when Campos resigned and wanted to vote for himself. So this conversation from this so-called historian that there wasn't anything, that this is just a recent opposition, 1998, I believe there was an attorney that was bringing up issues about that. I'm not sure if you were there then, back in 98. Anyway, it doesn't matter. The, the issue is, is I know that there was a complaint back then, there was some legal issues about that. So this isn't a recent phenomenon of some opposition to the process as this so-called professor and of his, of history. And to go into these things about labeling what these motives of these people are, I mean, what is, is Rhea Dehart against the district elections? I mean, are these people, who's saying they're against district elections? But no, we have this pompous professor over here that's making these accusations of people and putting names into these things. It really shouldn't be tolerated. All it is is more and more mudslinging, that's all we're getting out of this. We're getting people now labeling people Tea Party members. Where do you get that from? I mean, come on. You, you guys are insulting yourselves, you're embarrassing yourself. This whole town is outraged. You get 11,000 something signatures? Why do you think people are signing this? Because they're disgusted with this. All you do is sling mud, you call people names, you insult, insult, insult and meanwhile, you're on the wrong side of everything. Give it a rest. You got to change- You've got to change what you're, the way you're doing this. This can't go on like this. You're destroying this entire town. Everybody is mad. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Ruiz-Dana, and I live in District 7. I'm one of the proponents of one of the initiatives. And after hearing, you know, both sides, there, here, I feel like these petitions should unite, unite us, not divide us. The city of Watsonville needs us, and they need us for us to solve the problems, the real issues. The reason that I joined the group, Let the People Vote, is because I truly believe that everyone that is sitting there is should be elected by the people. I went on the Internet the other day, and I was looking, trying to compare and be fair with the charter, city charters that are around, close to us, which is, we all know, Santa Cruz, Gilroy. I don't know how many charter cities are in the state of California, but here, we have two very close to us. And one thing that grabbed my attention when I was reading their, the way they choose their city council members, is that they have the city council members at large. What that means is that everybody, the whole city of Watson, Santa Cruz, registered voters, vote for everyone. Therefore, it is fair for them to choose or to appoint a vacancy. In our district, in Watson, I mean, in Watsonville, California, I don't feel that the current system is representing all of us. I don't think it's working anymore. It needs to be changed. How it needs to be changed? By letting the people vote, choose their own representatives, because this district, this city, like our city attorney said, is unique. We are divided in districts. Therefore, I cannot vote for any other district. Yet, other district city council members can choose who's going to represent me. That's not a fair representation. And that's why we're doing this. We need to make sure the people from Watsonville understand that. And I would like to ask this question, I don't know if they can answer it today, or maybe in the future, but how many cities in the state of California are divided by district? And if this is the way they choose their vacancies? Because I think that shows really, if they are the people represented by, or by the people, if the people really choose who's going to represent them. I think that's a very important factor there. And I am offended a little bit about some comments on Mr. Pedro Castillo. It's sad to hear somebody who's with that type of education, talking to people like me, who I put a lot of hours into this, try to gather the signatures. I'm a mother, I'm a person who works here, I'm a one that goes and buys all the stores here locally, and to say that, who are we? I'm sorry, but that's not what we need. We need people to work together. And I asking three times, this is my third time that I come and talk in here, and every single time, I invite all of you, Mr. Montesino, Mr. Daniel Dodge, Trina, Mr. Gomez, I'm sorry, Mr. Bilicich, Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Cervantes, Mr. Palacios, Mr. Smith, Mr. Flores, people who are watching this on TV, residents of Watsonville, people who are here, let's work together. There is real issues that we need to face. We have the taxes, and we want to work on that, too. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address us on this issue? Please come forward and just state your name for the record.
My name is Carlos Rico. Resident of Watsonville. We've done a 360 way back in the '70s and the '80s, we had the good old boys. There was a suit because there was not enough Hispanic representation on city council. Now we have Hispanic representation. The majority of our town is Hispanic. A lot of the people that sign are Hispanic. And we're not against any of you. But you know, white, and people signed the petition, but you know what they really wanted to sign? They say, "Am I signing this petition? Can we elect our mayor?" And he says, "No, we can't. The best we can do is maybe rotate, because, you know, that's the way it is." But we've done a 360. We should go back, and if we could and we had the money, I think we shouldn't have stopped just with the petitions. We should have gone to Supreme Court and says, "Hey, look at, look at the majority of the people that live in Watsonville, it's 90% or 80%." And now we have all kinds of representation, and there's people that aren't being representative. And I think that some of the things you do are great, but there are some things that are wrong. And that's why I joined this cause. I'm not a Tea Party, I'm a Democrat, I always have been, and some of these people maybe belong to that party, but we're all working together as a community, because I think it's morally wrong what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other individuals, members of the public wishing to address us on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for discussion. Councilmember Bilicich?
I think we just need to make a motion, get this thing on the ballot. So the resolution calling for the election on June 3rd, 2014, and that's what I'd like to see at this point. Thank you.
Seconded by motion.
I did. I made a motion, accepting the report, certifying the results. Everything's on here. Directing the city attorney to return with a resolution calling the election for June 3rd, 2014.
Seconded by Councilmember Dodge. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
It's clearly evident that there's a passion involved with our community to go ahead and bring this forward. They are, we are the representative of the constituents, with the majority of them going through the whole area here with regarding getting the petition signed. And I'm to, I'm to address you. I am your representative, and if this is what you want us to do, let's go forward with this and find out what the rest of our voters have to say with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Dodge?
No, I was just going to thank, under this scenario, Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez, during the eight years that she'd be here, she will never have a shot at being the mayor. So I just wanted to sort of acknowledge her in a way like that. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Montesino, Hernandez?
No. I do just want to address some issues, because I do feel there's some misinformation that's being distributed, because I was not in appointment, and I was on the ballot. And, you know, similarly, Councilmember Bilicich was in appointment, and then the second time around, it was an uncontested race, so she was also on the ballot. And, you know, that was just a result of the system that this initiative will not address, because it was an uncontested race in a general election, and so this petition does not address those situations. It does complicate the issue around vacancy. And so there are numerous district election cities, there's a lot more sort of legislation statewide moving in that direction, because, you know, we're having this issue about rotating mayors, and you look at the numbers, you do get to see the breakdown of where people have served as mayors since district election. But what we didn't see was the numbers previous to that, where you had a lot of council members live in one district. And so that was a necessity, and it was a court decision that sort of said, you know, district elections should be required of the city of Watsonville, and you start to see more representation from across the city, from different parts of the city. So I did just want to correct that, because it is a misrepresentation of the reality of some of us sitting up here. I'm sorry? We can, we can talk after. I couldn't hear your question. So with that said, we'll go ahead and bring this to a vote.
Bilicich?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes. Yes. It'll be on the election.
So emergency items, there was none added to the agenda. The last few remaining items are informational items, report of dispersments, miscellaneous documents, including the minutes for the planning commission. And so those are available online, and also through the office for reading purposes. And with that, we shall adjourn our meeting. Thank you all so much.